Hello.
How are you?
Good.
And you?
Good.
Wow.
What? I can't remember.
I think it's a little too difficult.
I think your voice, I can't like things like that.
Well, you have many type of issues now.
Yeah.
Rushed my teeth along this.
Yeah.
I want to get a laugh.
I did run like two.
We're going to have a future. Oh. Natural resources is the one which will be for me. Or it's going to be. But maybe we'll change it. We'll find out.
That's everything else, sorry. I was right there.
Dang, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Yes, yes.
You got down the letter? I stopped. I may have booked it in the other side. If you want, I'll stick myself up here. So I'll grab it for you.
She asked me.
I'm hoping if I could make it.
This, this one.
Do you guys have any tests?
I just turned up my computer.
Do you want me to text her?
Yeah.
Are we voting right now?
Oh, we're not.
Just a couple here.
Oh.
It's town warrant as well.
Okay.
Give a chance. You need to text her if someone's going right. I'm just going.
Yeah.
I ask for a DTM.
Okay.
I guess I'll leave it on, I'll turn it off later. I need to put it on.
Yeah.
Otherwise this thing isn't like your own.
You guys good?
Yes.
Okay, we will call the public hearings. Multiple ones this evening to order. It is Wednesday, March 6th, a little after 5:00 PM. And we have a majority of select persons here. And we're joined by Clerk Jessica Grover and Manager Sharon Jackson. I'm assuming our chair is on her way. Till she gets there, the vice chair will be acting as a chair. We had a public hearing ad. And again, there are four of them. And we will start with the first one. So I'm going to open the public hearing for number one, which is Chapter 46 Cannabis Revision and Clarification of Tractor 46 Marijuana by Attorney Mary Costigan to ensure compliance with state statute. The purpose of this article is to regulate the permitting and operation of cannabis establishments within the town of Bethel. So the floor is open. If you would like to speak, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand. And I think we know everybody saying your name. And we'd love to hear your comments on this. Does everybody have a copy of the proposed changes? Um, Sharon.
So basically what we've done is we have the attorney look at all of our marijuana ordinances. There were nine different ones that were established several years ago. And she combined all into one because there was so much repetition throughout the nine of them. And they had been just added and deleted language in all nine. So the correct term now is cannabis. So she's drafted one cannabis ordinance. And all nine that we had on the books will be repealed. At the same time, this one is on the warrant to be, from being revised to be accepted.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Any questions after that? Any statements? Okay.
We still have on, I don't know the page number. Let's see if I, it looks like page four. It still has on line I. It still says town of Selectmen.
It does.
So Jess will change that.
Sharon, you worked with the lawyer on this draft?
Yes.
And you're happy with it, satisfying you?
Yes, I think it includes everything that is in all of the other ones as a combined. So it's not confusing.
I think, I guess the only other piece to make mention is a couple of years ago, there was a special town meeting to change the setback of the retail facilities from the 1,000 foot to 500 foot. In this proposal, it does propose to put that back to 1,000. So I guess that would be the only other piece. So they all will be the same then.
I have a question on, so it's on the third page. Right at the top paragraph where it talks about inherently hazardous substances.
What page?
Uh, three.
Page three.
And I know on the code document that carbon dioxide was crossed out. So I just wasn't sure if we should do that here as well. Because, so it says inherently hazardous substance means a liquid, chemical, or compressed gas, carbon dioxide, or chemical product that has a flash point at over 38 degrees Celsius or 100 degrees Fahrenheit. And I know on the codification document that carbon dioxide is crossed out. So I wasn't sure if we should do that here now or before it goes, I guess, on the warrant.
Oh, what codification document is it?
Um, the.
The one that we have in our packet now?
Yeah.
If it's one of those nine, those are going to be repealed anyway. The nine?
Right. If this, this is the new one, right?
Yes, this would be the new one.
Okay. So we wouldn't make that same change on this one?
If you're going to make it to the old one, why wouldn't you make the change?
Right.
Carbon dioxide.
Oh, oh, I see.
And Mary Costigan may not have known that when she was reviewing this.
Okay, yeah, I just noticed that today because I was reading it all.
Which kind of makes sense because carbon dioxide is inflammable. So we can take that.
Okay.
Sorry, I answered your question.
We already came, but Mary didn't know that.
No, she wouldn't have.
Any other things? Okay, hearing done. We will close the public hearing for the cannabis. Public hearing number two. And we will open that. And this is Chapter Five Administration, which is Section Five. And Section 59 within that Conservation Commission. Update of Selectmen to Select Board and the addition of the words education of to Section V. Do you want to do a little briefing on that?
Jess, you can, do you know that? Is that the Conservation Commission one?
Mm-hmm.
Sarah.
Or Sarah, do you want to do a little?
I mean, I think the reason why we worked on it this fall is because of a question of a past practice of using that, the money that was budgeted or that we just thought was in our budget to help send two kids to conservation school or to the camp. But I think we understand now better how the budget process works. And like that wouldn't necessarily be the way we should spend that money. But I think it's also important to include education because I think a big piece of this would be education. So I don't know. And Julie and Ann are on admission to yourself.
It did, it, you guys want to do that?
No, you feel free, I'll do this.
Basically, it came back down to the, without that word, we couldn't use correctly, couldn't use the money on, for education because it wasn't. So that was, that was not acceptable.
And it also broadens what we do, what I would like to see we do on the Conservation Commission. Not just develop and use nat, use natural resources as a town. But to say, well, let's educate the people about that so that we then as a town, we might be able to make better decisions on conservation, you know, in the town. So that's another pretty big piece of it. So it would sort of widen our role just a little bit. And that's what I would like to see happening on the Conservation Commission. So, and the wording needs to be changed because it's not grammatical.
Yes.
Ask the English teacher, Sarah.
Well, I should have picked up on it earlier, but the.
I am. Yeah, the English teacher picked up on it. Should be education about, I don't know if we can change that now? Can we change that now?
That's what the public hearing is for.
Okay.
So you just want to take.
Oh, this is the wrong preposition. We could either put education after natural resources and phrase it differently or just change of to about. But we're not educating the resources themselves.
Right.
It's not the education of the resources.
I can educate a tree, you're a swamp.
Yeah, that would be hard.
Yeah, no, I'm not good at it.
They're not good learners.
I could put a second F there.
All right, does anybody else have any other comments? I have to say, I'm happy to hear Sarah with regards to what would encompass education. Just having it in there for an educational assistance or scholarship was, I didn't think, most appropriate use. But having education in there, like the lady said, is, I think, very appropriate. So I was glad to hear what you had to say on that.
I think that was just like, we were, so I talked to Sharon about this the other day. But I think, you know, when I just joined them, they said, you have that $1,000 budget. And, you know, and Woodstock did that. And sort of like, that sounds like a good idea. But like it, nobody, we didn't realize, I didn't realize until becoming part of the budget process that we need to have a reason for that $1,000. And we just were told we had it. So I think that's.
Thank you.
So was there a request we should take off, add of, add in there?
Quite about.
Yes.
And then a comma after the result.
That's optional.
Yeah, that is.
Serious comment, a question.
Yeah. Thank you, Lucy. You good with that, Jen?
That's good.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. We'll close public hearing number two. Who's text, who's in one of those texts?
No, no, something else. I was looking.
Oh, you were a little concerned. Okay. We will look to open public hearing number three. This is amendments to Part One Administrative Legislation. Again, it's Chapter Five Administration. Change of status for the Bethel Regional Airport from an enterprise fund to a department, I would say fund, within the town of Bethel. And again, hopefully you all have copies. Do you want me to give a briefing? Or you want me to give a briefing?
Uh, would you please?
Yep. So the briefing on this is in our code. The budget for the airport department is known as enterprise fund. So the, this fund is, budget is reviewed by the Select Board every year. And also, if there's any grants, if it's over $25,000 of grants, it needs to go to the town meeting. And if the budget in total is over $175,000, it needs to go on the town meeting warrant as well. What the proposed amendments do is take that process and put it into the regular budget process that the town performs. You would see it as where revenues come in and expenses happen for the airport and have that developed budget. It would be reviewed by the select persons and the budget committee and then go to a town meeting. So it just takes out kind of the middleman. And also, what it, what's been happening here is the funds. If, if there's not enough funds, revenue coming in to cover all of the costs, those, that gets funded by the undesigned fund balance for the town. And it's, it's true, it's transparent, it's disclosed. However, I think it's now time that we take all of this and put it in front of the people. And so they can see if there's, within that department, like any other department is budgeted, if there needs to be funds appropriated for it. So I don't know, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I would add is that an enterprise fund is supposed to be self-sufficient and is supposed to pay for itself. This does not. So that's why at the end of the fiscal year, they're in the red. So whatever their, their budget is over, that money then has to come out of the undesigned fund balance, like Michelle said. And that's not how the other budgets are. So you, you budget what you need and you only spend what you budget. So that's a major reason to do this. So that way, the budget will be put together for what is needed. And it will be monitored throughout the fiscal year so that you don't go over your budget.
I thought in a previous meeting, it was mentioned that the auditors.
Yes, they did.
And they said that this was set up incorrectly. And this change would have it set up correctly.
Yes, they did. They were the ones that pointed out that this was not an enterprise fund because number one, it doesn't support itself.
So in actuality, we'll be, this, approving this will put us in compliance with accounting principles.
Exactly.
So.
Just a question, a point of information, I guess. When does the budget, what's the budget process timing? I know we vote on it in June. Is that already in the works? Like, what is the budget process in Bethel?
I'm in the process of putting the budget together for all the departments. I meet with, I've met with all the department heads. And they, we went over all of their budgets. The first budget meeting is going to be Monday night. And I will be meeting with the budget committee and the selectmen. Those binders are theirs, right there. They'll have the entire budget in it and all the backup information for it. And I'll present the budget to the committee and the Select Board and review all of the line items and monies being asked for. And Monday night's the first meeting.
So if the Conservation Commission says, okay, we'd like to have a budget, we're too late to say to you?
No, because the, those, if, like I caught, I sent, sorry, I sent Sarah an email. And I said, there's $1,000 in the conservation budget from last year. What is that for? Because nothing had been used. And I'm not going to budget money if.
Yeah, it was.
No, none of it's been used. We saw.
Yeah, we sent two kids to Brian. Did they announce the bill? That'd be interesting.
There hasn't been a bill received.
We should try that list again.
But so we talked, and I, so she said, well, what do we, she told me about that, donating money to them. But what I told her was, you don't have a budget to donate the money. That's not the purpose of a committee or a board having a budget. So if money is going to be given to any educational board or any other activity like that, it has to come through another process of recommending those funds. So I asked her what they did for projects. And so she told me about the projects. And I said, the purpose of having a budget is to pay for doing your activities. So you'll, you will have a budget this year, but it won't be to donate money for.
Right, right. But just my question is, is that if we want to be part of this budget process and we want to say, all right, these are some plans that we have that we would like to do.
Yeah.
When would you say to us, get that money, get that budget into us? By this time, I will meet with you at da-da-da or whatever.
It would be probably in January sometime. And the reason that we just had the conversation recently was because that was one of the items that was like hanging. And it was like, who is in charge of this? So I thought it's Sarah.
Okay, and is Monday's a closed meeting or is that a public?
No, it's a public meeting.
I don't think there's many closed meetings.
Yeah.
All meetings are closed.
Public's business is done in public.
Yeah, and it's a, they're open meetings. They may not have, and they're open to the public unless it's executive session, which has protected conversations. However, the public doesn't have the right to speak. So that's, that's clarity.
So the budget meeting, they don't?
A budget and select persons. Unless we, unless we provide for a period of time similar to what we do in a regular Select Board meeting.
Yeah.
Then, then, or unless the chair, you know, you have a question and the chair recognizes you, then it's observation. That's your, that's your right, is to be able to observe it.
Okay, I think that's helpful.
Any other questions? Like that has one?
Sentence number one doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, sentence number six, by the way, it's rated above. The Select Board shall serve as the approval authority for the wastewater treatment department budget in accordance with provisions outlined in this chapter.
So what is wastewater treatment paying to do with the airport?
So this is the, those are the two types of budgets that were.
Enterprise.
Noted as enterprise funds. So they are processed the same, same with the wastewater treatment. The town manager provides a budget and the capital plan presents it to the selectmen. The selectmen deliberate about it and approve it.
But is this, is this where that should be? For the wastewater treatment?
Uh, yes. This is how the code reads now. We're, we're lifting or negating the airport piece of it. So the wastewater process would remain the same. And the airport is just lifted out and will be, you know, as presented by the town manager.
So we should probably, any quarrels of budget, we should probably singular.
Right.
She got. Will this change like, like will it affect, making this change will affect individual taxpayers? Or not really, it's been a thing for any.
Exactly, exactly. It's, it's just kind of time for that. And, and the public will see that all the way through. Right? It's not changing anything because it's, it's been there, especially in the last several years. And now it will be right there.
And so it may even decrease it because there's more overs or like more process.
It, it depends when the budget's being done, what revenues are attributed to it for that year. So it will depend.
I think the biggest thing is, is accounting practices. There are, there is, in the accounting world, accountants follow accounting rules. This is outside of the rules. And we're putting ourselves within the rules of accounting. That is really the, what we're doing. All the rest of it is conversation, in my opinion.
No, that's true. It's generally accepted accounting practices.
That's the, that's the proper terminology right there, yes.
Yes. Any other questions?
Did you get the three budgets that are, it changed the budget?
Actually, the line is there to take the S out.
It's just hard to see.
You can't see it because this coffee's so faint.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I see.
It should be on five, all three of them, 513, 520.
No, it is there.
What is your name?
I'm Julie Reeve.
Julie Reeve, okay, just for the record.
Oh, yeah, I was just curious. You mentioned you were changing the ordinance because the airport isn't paying for itself. So it's not technically an enterprise fund. Does the wastewater treatment plant pay for itself?
It's a discussion for.
I would, I just.
I'm just curious, sorry.
Yeah, I, I think we'll know more when we go to act on that, on the budget. But there may be, there may be a time for that too.
Yeah, I was just curious since we were changing one, if that question had come up.
Yeah.
We'll have a better understanding of that too after our audit comes in.
Yeah.
That question has been tossed around.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we will close this public hearing number three. We will open public hearing number four. And that is Chapter 136 Signs. Section Five, General Restrictions, Edition of Q. No private signs shall be permitted on the town-owned property at the corner of Main Street and Mechanic Street, otherwise known as Veterans Memorial Park, including but not limited to temporary signs within the right-of-way. Briefing, Jen probably.
That is as originally asked by the Veterans. Heart group or whoever that's classified because at one point, signs were getting hung on the fencing and put in the walkway.
Thank you.
Also, it just clarifies that that can't happen.
Any questions or comments?
Seems to me it pays respect to the Veterans Memorial there. I think that's pretty important.
And I agree with the intent of it. My question that I had originally when we sent it was the definition of private signs. Just, I think it's probably inherent. We don't have a. We don't have a definition in our definitions of it, but it seems, the intent seems to be pretty clear, so hopefully it doesn't trip us up. Does anybody else have?
I don't see a problem with it, but if it was a problem, just signs in general, any sign, you know, any sign is not...
Yeah, that was, that's what it came down to.
Right, because I think he wanted to have the availability to, to be able to put safety, public safety signs, if there's an emergency. I think that was, that's, that was what it was. Julie, have a question?
Yeah, I was thinking about public safety signs, which is important. I wonder if there shouldn't be some sort of an out here, though, in that you might have some Veterans Day related signs that you might want to put up there that are respectful, that are appropriate. This says none, and so is there a way to build a wiggle room there for, you know, appropriate, related, or...
I think they can come and petition the town to be able to do that.
This does not mention, give any wiggle room for that.
And this is private signs, that would probably be veteran-related.
But that would still be private.
It's still private, it's still private. I mean, that's it, I mean, we do...
It's not the town, it's veterans, they're not part of the town, so...
We do have pieces in the sign ordinance already where there's no, I think, business, business-type signs, and I think with the temporary, that you have to ask the town to be able to put that in, but, I mean, we'll take that, we'll take that note.
Maybe even something like unrelated, or...
I mean, it, it, if veterans can't, what's on a, nobody's going to say something.
True, it just seems...
Right, but it's still...
Let's clarify the code.
It came from, honestly, what happened, it came from political signs, getting called on the fence.
Sure, it's meant to honor them. If they wanted to put a sign up, congratulations, veterans, or we honor veterans, you know, on November eleventh, they should be able to do that.
If we talked about that, and I'm going to speak wrong on this, but I think it was discussed that it was not theirs, but theirs, so they could do stuff like that, but I...
That's what I was thinking.
That's not the town's?
Yeah, it is the town.
It's the towns, but...
I think they wanted their respect, I think, of used as, as for memorial parks.
I mean, would it be that hard to clarify it, though?
Probably not.
Yeah, just to, to offer that, to the towns...
Are there any other different comments about it?
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does, does that include political signs, too?
Yeah.
Under private?
Yeah, because that, that's what triggered this, the first time. Well, the political signs were...
There's no signs?
No, I know, I know. Right, right. And, and we walk a fine line, because our sign ordinance is to be content neutral, so that's why we have these types of verbs in here, I think, descriptors. But, yes, so if somebody wanted to put a public sign, then I guess we tackle that when, you know, Telstar wants to put, you know, congratulate seniors, I guess, that would...
You also can't put, legally, you can't put anything on the sidewalk, because you're blocking the sidewalk, so you can't do that, any.
Does anybody have any new comments to, to this? Does anyone have any comments?
I think it works the way it is. See how it goes.
Okay, hearing, no further comments. Questions? We'll close public hearing number four. There you go. And see no further business on the agenda at this time with the public hearings, unless there is anything. Okay, we will close our meeting of public hearings at this time. This is all, sorry.